All our places, bright Chinese.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Thursday, August 28th, meeting of the Culver Town Council to order. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that your participation in this meeting is your consent to be recorded and rebroadcast on the YouTube channel. For all call, please.
William Covinger.
President.
Justin Croy.
Here.
Jimmy Monroe.
Here.
Dana Neer.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August 14th council. Any additions or questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Your moves to approve the minutes of August 14th.
Hold a second.
Seconded by Mr. Croy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those same sign. Thank you. Next, public concerns, utility ordinance, violation, and appeals. Anyone in the room for any of the above? Do we have any online?
No, I got one question. Perry, just being 527. During the redevelopment meeting, I was asked about the wayfinding graphics or artwork on the street. I know that we put a lot of effort into that a couple of years ago. Is there any plan or consideration for refresh?
Yes, I've spoken with Victor Lowery about it, and he approached me. We're doing some work, obviously, at Academy in Lakeshore, so we thought we would wait. We'll revisit that in spring, Karen, and look at it. We've also been in contact with MACOG up in Michiana, or, yeah, Miss Walk, Michiana area. Anyway, we're looking at pathways, signage, and actual spray painting for the, some of the pathways that we've put in. It's a thin line. We're looking at cost balance, right? Cost effectiveness, there's, they always sell you, they tell you a package, and I think a lot of it's too much for the size of our town, but there are some nice things sign-wise, especially in the park area along the path, and especially on the south side of town. Kind of denote where the path is versus sidewalk. It's something that we're looking at. It could be as easy as a stencil spray. The other question I have is really is, is how we do that emblem and what it looks like in the end. We may want to reconsider a design there, but in conversation, definitely for next spring. Yes, thank you.
I mean, the consequence is that it just gets deteriorates.
Sure.
Looks unsightly like the town doesn't care, and sends a different message.
It does. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone online?
Mr. President, I did receive a letter.
Oh, all right. Go ahead.
If that, if nobody else is online to speak out. August 25th, 2025, to the Culver Town Board. Section 10 of the golf cart, or, excuse me, ordinance states if a person cannot meet any of the criteria, they may make a written request for an exception. This is our written request. People who keep their carts at Culver Storage require an exception from section five, specifically driving on the sidewalk. There is only one exit from Culver Storage. The ordinance, as written, prohibits the carts from leaving the facility due to the location on State Route 10. We ask that an exception be made and apply to those keeping their golf carts at Culver Storage, allowing them to use the sidewalk for 91 feet going east from the gate to the entrance of the liquor store parking lot. There is nothing to obscure the view of either pedestrians or cart users over this short distance. Thank you again for your considerations, Stephen and Ed Osborne. I wanted to read that out loud as a request that she had. I would ask the council if there's any desire to revisit the ordinance or comments on that.
I don't have any desire against it.
No, I think we heard from the public pretty clearly that not only does, I don't think there's any interest in the council in doing that, there's also major interest in the public against it, so.
I feel the same way.
Yeah, I also think if you, if we were to allow an exception just for that, how do other people who would see the carts coming down go, oh, they must have opened up the sidewalk to everyone? We just opened a can of worms.
Yeah, and I did the measurement on the, on the county GIS, the approximate, what was it, 91 feet? It's also about 91 feet to Frida's, and if I was a business owner, well, one business is going to have the opportunity to allow people to come to their business. If I was a restaurant owner, I'd want people to come to my business. If I owned the Culver tool there, the festival shop, well, people become fix the tires with me, so I want them another 91 feet. So it's just opening up a can of worms and, and, yeah, no for me.
Any interest? I would make a motion that we put the letter in the record board.
I think it'll be, what, documented in minutes?
Perfect.
It'll get documented in the minutes.
Okay.
Since you run it right.
Right. And that's why I asked for the comment of the council, going to the official record.
But draw a motion. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Second read of ordinance 2025-008, water rate ordinance.
Be, uh, far as discussing it, I mean, we don't, we need to make a motion first before we go into discussion.
You can just discuss.
It's not much. I, over the past week, or two weeks since our last meeting, I've seen quite a bit of public commentary on social media and other things, and I don't think people understand why you have to do that. Because when I first heard we're going to increase the water rates by the rate you did, I was like, absolutely not. And I still don't want to. But when we're that far, that low in our account that the state says has to be at a certain level, it's literally costing us more money to provide citizens water than we are making back from that water. The only result is losing money constantly. And I know that that sucks for local businesses, especially car washes and laundromats, and that's not something any of us, the five of us, want to do. But it is costing us more money than, so there has to be an increase.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Justin. When I first heard, without studying, my inclination was not do this, let's not be hasty, let's look into another option. But, you know, looking at it, you know, through the lens of study, it's realizing why we have to do this. I agree with you. I don't want to, but it's necessary.
I think if you go 10 years without raising rates, you're not in a predicament 10 years later. And the, the cost of everything we're doing, whether it's sewers, software, airway, or upgrade, you know, when the sewer plant lift station goes out, it's five times the money it was just 10 years ago. It's insane what's going on in the industry. And it is not, our new rate will not be far many rates as paid. There are a lot of towns, too, that are now replacing 16, 17 year old plants that are getting them put us back in the middle of the pack in the next three to five years, seeing all of her northern hamper for the job. But I, I think if we had done incremental increases over 10 years, we would be and how, how to mitigate that, I think the geo bond helps to mitigate it because it could be worse. I think if we can afford to do some things, jump off on money, whatever the projects are, whether it's water, sewer, sidewalk, et cetera, we can certainly look at doing that. It's reasonable to assume you can't live 10 years without raising rates. And we were in the same predicament when we went eight years without raising rates before this. We had to do quite a bump in the water and sewer.
Well, I think also that our financial advisors have done an excellent job, and there's just, we approached them on various scenarios, and basically it comes back to one thing, and that's raise the rates. There's, there's no other option that we can do, so, from that point.
We looked at it incrementally, too.
Yes.
And that was a question we had after we got the first study back, and not something, we tried to avoid everything we could to raise rates at the rate we're having to raise them. Because I think we all collectively knew that's a bit of a challenge.
Yep.
How can we not have to do this? We understand we have to raise it something because we're losing money. How do we do it the least amount possible? And you sent that question back to our financial advisors, Baker and Elliot. We got, basically, there's nothing we can do, so.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve on second read. Jenny, do you have any other?
No, I think Kevin.
I was going to comment really quick on something Justin said, and the documents that Karen provided in terms of public information and getting them on the website, I was kind of questioning whether or not they were getting circulated, people reading it. So I pulled off the analytics from the webpage for the last month since we introduced the idea of the water rates just between July 27th to August 26th. On the 14th, imagine that, the day of the meeting, we were over 100 hits, and we had an increase probably about 42% of our monthly average use of the webpage, and the page views were over 1,000. So I'd like to think they're coming from my Saucy Town Manager notes, but I'm going to guarantee you that that spike in increase probably had to do with public interest in the water rates. And the information that Karen provided in the Word document we posted online, I think that it was informative. It may not be something people want to hear, but at least it was transparent, so I just appreciate it. I just wanted to add that.
All right. I appreciate the comments, Justin, in terms of educating the public and having people understand. I had someone tell me that someone was complaining rather loudly, meaning that we're raising rates because we want to draw towards it. I'd say I don't see the connection there. It's not been part of the conversation, but sometimes you you have to be responsible of the way people are coming to this meeting and engaged. You have to follow up and read on it. You have to ask questions. We can't make force of anyone to want it, right? But I think we're trying to get this worked out and make sure people do get it. It's still on.
Kevin, I'd like, before we vote on the motion, I'd like you to explain, if you would please, that the dunes project basically is a benefit toward the
Yes, sir.
water rate increase. If we didn't have the dunes, it would be worse than what it is right now.
I think there's, there's the notion that the, the dunes project is called as undue infrastructure cost to the town, which is rightfully, if you're, if you're not familiar with how the dunes financing is being done, is a reasonable response to that. The assumption is that the infrastructure for both water and the sewer is being paid for through the fund, the water fund. It is not. It is paid from, by a tax incremental fund. Essentially, the developer is paying for those improvements themselves to the improvement of the property. The base assessed value versus the approved assessed value is captured, and that's what we call the tip money coming to redevelopment. That money went towards the payment as well as the ready grant of $1.3 million towards the installment of both water and sewer out there. So that is not directly related to the water fund, nor did it come from the town's cost. It's being paid for by the property development itself. So that is not something that is. So we, Karen wisely went back to take a look, and if we use the numbers that are being suggested from the water usage at the dunes in the occupancy, it actually, the income that is captured by new users and new, obviously, new residents, new users, part-time or full-time, is going to go for that water fund. And it's an increase that allowed us to drop, I can't say specifically, Bill, how much, because we looked at that and the geo bond. Those two factors, the income additional to the dunes, as well as the offset of the water plant through the geo bond rather than the water fund itself, estimatedly comfortably, I could say, 40% lower than what the rate would have been in terms of increase. So it actually lowered, did not raise. And that is not coming from me or observationally, that's coming from the analysis by Baker Tilt.
I know that Baker Tilly projected the rate would stay stable through 2029, wasn't it?
This, that's the projection right now, and it will, excuse me.
And based on the projects that we still want to accomplish that aren't currently being, aren't on the pocket right now.
Karen answering that question because that's, yeah, deals with the button there.
So, I was basically implying that the Baker Tilly study said we'd be somewhat stable on the rates through 2029, assuming we also do some of these projects and they don't come overbid or, you know, because we're predicting estimates on those. My point being, by 2029, a future council will have to implement something incremental, so, like this again. Future councils need to do great study and stay on top of it. Yeah.
Okay.
May, may I ask one more question about Baker Tilly's study at the dunes? Does that also include their estimate occupancy?
Remember that? Yes, okay, yeah. And it's the same estimate that they used when they generated the, the actual amount of tip income. So, yes, thanks, Dan.
Okay, now I have a motion to approve on second read ordinance 2025-008. Mr. Neer, please, is there a second?
Hold a second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Croy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same sign. New business. Fire department request for grass truck upgrade.
Yeah, I won't take up much time. I kind of snuck in on this agenda. Our 1995 grass truck that we have is not, like, scheduled to be redone for another six years. So we've got a lot, we've got some wiring issues and the lighting issues of it is causing wiring issues, so we would like, we've got to estimate together to put a package together to do a bunch of the rewiring and change out some of the older lights that are helping to cause the issue of two LEDs. And the package for the truck is like $13,098.85. We'd like to be able to put that money into the grass truck because it's not rescheduled to get redone for another six years. If I remember right, we're new to upgrading. So this should help make this truck, hopefully, we've looked at it, seen that it's, it's physically sound, I mean, the frame's still good, the axle, the motor still runs, it's got a diesel motor in it. So we feel that the truck's going to last longer than putting $13,000 into a grass truck that if we had to replace next year's $300,000.
That's right.
Our last, our last grass truck cost us $130,000.
Yeah, I was thinking it was like plus and minus.
Plymouth just got one of theirs, it's $480,000 or something, it was a thundering harvest. So I'd just like to put some money into the old one to get this, hopefully, five to six more years of no trouble out of it.
I'll make the motion to approve of $13,098.85 to rewire the grass truck and improve the value.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve the money for the grass truck. Seconded by Mr. Neer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Hope and care are proposed.
Yes, sir. We received RFP Tuesday, the closing day. I've received three fair proposals. We'll be opening them this evening. I will be taking these under advisement, the proposals, so we can study and ensure that the, the proposals are matching, because there's quite a bit. These proposals, just to jog memories, are for a three-year install and removal starting this fall. So we'll do removal and install, I should say. They are for the installation of Pier B sockets next year. Just the labor part in the installation, as well as the purchasing of materials and the installation of the A Pier sockets in 2027. So there's three components put into two work. But proposals, that's what I'll be looking at to make sure I have the accurate prices of each and making sure that we're pairing apples to apples, but I'll open this evening and check the amount. First one received is from Tim Uha, Uha, excuse me, with North Shore Fab. Dear Council, North Shore Fab is pleased to submit this proposal and RFP at 2025 and 20 years of experience and was managing the project from 2016 to 2024. We're looking at, if I'm looking correctly, project package for A, B, and C. Love some project package would be 268, 301. And the itemization is included as well as requested insurance and documentation. Next one is from BBC LLP. The Valiquet Brothers LLP. Itemization for each project looks to be included as well as associated documentation. Total package, total investment over length, the contract will be 197, 795. And the last one is received from Johnson and Sons Pier. Here's the, here's the key in order. And math. I am not that good at math to do this that quickly. I'm not seeing a total on this one. So I will looks like I have to do the math on this one. Unless I'm missing it, Karen, if you mind, I'll check. Evan, what's the, how time sensitive is this? The council wanted to take the time to get, look through these and look at the itemize. Is this something we can approve next meeting? Absolutely, absolutely. That's why I'm asking, just to take them under advisement. I'll provide council copies of each one. I'll email those to you, probably tomorrow. That's, well, I'd like to award this next meeting, I think, in September. We do have removal starting in October, so it is a bit time sensitive to get things organized and ready to go. I'm sorry to delay here, but, sorry if you said that. No, no, it is.
Quick edition.
Yeah, 198, 50s?
190.
190, excuse me.
866.
866.
That was great.
And we'll take a look at it. Yep, definitely take a look at it. Thank you.
Evan, based on how you explained it, does this mean this would take us through 2026 and 27?
It would be, so, next year, 2026 would be the first year, 27, then 28th fall would probably be the new contract.
Got it.
For the, yeah, the, the socket is scheduled, the project for the socket should be completed by 2027, and the spring.
So then the price is much higher if you're comparing these numbers. It's
What is it?
It's beyond one season plus of all.
It is. It's, it's over three years of contract. The second thing is to, to be fair to the, to the quotes on these proposals, I'm asking him to project their expenses for, for the materials for the 2027 socket project, which is, I know that was difficult to do. I wanted those on, on a least comparative basis. I needed those prices because that's going to be, and I want to award this contract, I think, to one person for three years and stabilize the project so we're not constantly having turnover. Okay.
Thank you.
Just to, just to double check, this is three seasons of removal and install plus one. It would be three seasons of removal and install, and it will end in the fall of 2020. If I'm understanding correct, yeah. Then plus the Pier B labor and materials for the sockets. Pier B is, no, just the labor, Pier A, material and labor. Yes, sir.
One more question for clarification.
It's, it's two full years, 26 to 27, spring, fall, and then the fall of 25, right? Let me, let me walk through.
We're going to remove it this year.
Right. Install next year, 26. Remove 26, fall. Install, spring, 27. Remove 27.
Two and a half.
There you go.
Two and a half.
So.
Three years.
Move, remove 26, and think of it that way, remove 27. Okay, thank you. And it will be heading into 28. That, I explained it confusingly. We'll work those details out specifically within the contract when they sign it. It'll be exact dates, so, thank you.
So we'll take those under advisement.
If I could, please, on next meeting. Thank you. Do I need council approval for that? I don't think so. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Next item is the approved 2026 department budgets.
It's a step, two or three, in a multi-step process of getting through the budget, approving the budget for 2026. We met the first week of August. The department heads came in and presented their budgets. There was a ton of discussion. I think our department heads are fairly responsible in their requests. And there was nothing really that came out. In the, in between time, I was able to reduce one line item for each of them with benefits, our health insurance, I projected an 8% increase, and we're actually having a decrease by 0.03%, so I was able to take some of that off. But just wanted to review, there's copies up here if anybody wants to see them. The clerk's budget is 617,890. That's a 7% increase. The main increase comes from the hiring of a part-time deputy, which was really needed, and that actually may not, that 7% increase may not be fully realized, as I think, once we do the salary ordinance, we'll split out that person's salary between water, sewer, and clerk's office, because she is doing a lot of different things. The police department, 818,700, that's a 5% increase. Fire, 499,200, that's actually a 33% decrease, but it's kind of inflated because we've got money budgeted in there for the purchase, the, the final payment on the, for next year. EMS, 819,900, that's a 6% increase. The street department, 420,687, a 3% increase. And the park at 405,900, a 1% increase. I also have money budgeted for the motor vehicle highway fund, that's at 77,570. Part of that money will go toward, will be used for paving. And then there's a payment on the street sweeper that we need to make at the end of the year. Local roads and streets, $17,070. All of that money is basically what we receive in local, our vehicle, our local road and street is what we'll spend. The cumulative capital development fund, we've got budgeted $100,000, and I believe that's really similar to what we had previously. Riverboat, $11,200, that's a slight increase as the commitment to the Marshall County Council on Aging increase from $5,000 to $7,200. Grants at 3,000, we'll see if we even use that, that's, and that's money in, money out. Nothing that actually, that we pay for. We have the opioid unrestricted funds that we receive, money from the opioid settlements. We have not paid out anything in '24. We have not paid out anything in '25. But I talked Um, but I talked, I spoke with Annette Hanning and at some point we did commit money to Project Hope. Um, but they just haven't invoiced us. So she's going to prepare invoice for this year. And so I combined the twenty four monies with what we'll get in twenty six and um budgeted that five thousand six fifteen for the unrestricted funds and that, those are funds that we could use any way we wanted to. Um, but then the restricted funds of fourteen thousand one fifteen. Um, I put in fifty seven thousand for unsafe building if it's needed. That's the same amount as what we budgeted this year. Um, we have to add debt service for the geo bond, a hundred forty four thousand six ninety four. And then I've got budgeted water at six thousand, six hundred twelve thousand two seventy three and sewer at six eighty nine thousand fifteen. So um basically the total general fund budgeted amount is three million one seventy three seventy seven. Overall, it's a three percent decrease from last year, but did it last year? Um, but a lot of that was a part. And if you all are okay with that, I would just ask for motion to approve the budgets and approve we going ahead with the public notice. Um, I got the information into, into Gateway. Um, and once you all approve that, I'm going to finish all that out. Have to publish a public notice. That is something that goes out on Gateway for the public's knowledge. Um, you can go to Gateway and look for, I think the first page is, if you go to the DLGF website. Our, I'm sorry, the Department of Local Government website, it's IN.gov backslash DLGF. There's a gateway button on the front page. You can click on that. That'll take you to a lot of different reports that are available through the state. Um, a lot of them are what I spend my time on the first two months of the year uploading information. Um, but if you go to the budgets, you can sign up to find out when your budget hearing is and it'll automatically send you a budget notice once it's also sent that budget notice out on town and lake like I normally do. Uh, but we will have that budget hearing the second meeting. With the first reading.
Do you also like?
I'll have it.
Karen, thanks for updating the spreadsheet scores um with that new insurance number information, et cetera. I'll make the motion to approve the department then proposed budgets and um authorize not authorize, but approve of our clerk publishing the notice to Gateway and.
That's my room is to approve the uh budget that's proposed. And uh for the publication.
One second.
Second by Mr. Troy. Once and for all, sir, if I may say aye, aye, for the same sign. Now, let's see where we're going. Board and commission reports. Tactical review and commission.
Hi, Kedim. Yeah, nothing to report on the TRC versus lagging reports for July. I can just go down my list for you. In uh July, building permits applied for was twenty-two. We had seven in June. The total fees collected for building permits, fence, roof, electrical permits, BZA and plan commission applications for Culver was two thousand eight hundred one dollars. In June, it was one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's generally been slow. I'm just going to skip ahead and say the BZA hasn't met in two months. We have our first case coming up in September. Zoning ordinance update, presented some updates to the plan commission at their last meeting. Had some comments. I've made some adjustments to that and I'll look at that again. Those updates are through articles one through six or a couple chapters if you like of our zoning ordinance plan. It's about nine pages worth of material. It's an easy read though. Actually, it'll list on there and I'll, I'll send it out to you when the plan commission has it closer to dialed in. But it, it says what gets deleted and what gets added. So it's kind of like everything's in there twice for the most. Um, unsafe structures, we talked about four properties at the meeting earlier this evening. Plan commission had two cases in July and will have one in September, at least so far. There's still some time. And those are the highlights. Got any questions for me?
Is it you that determines unsafe versus bad?
Yes. Short answer, yeah.
Okay. So. Good questions. Thank you.
We just had a meeting and started discussing our um financial spending plan, if you will. Uh, we've been seeking input from uh retail business, council, um literally anyone who wants to give some input. We had a really good productive meeting um this last week and got some input, interestingly from our audience. Um, and we had approved new banners that I think Sally told you about. Um, those should be going up anytime. And they haven't already started. The old will come down, the new will go up. Uh, and the redevelopment commission wants to thank Kevin and Suzie Muller for working together to get feedback for the local merchants or redevelopment commission. Um, it will basically uh direct people downtown in a more uniform way. All our banner signs will look the same redevelopment, uh, but the bill for those. Um, and it's kind of exciting because I think uh the merchants have been paying attention to the fact that redevelopment commission is working on a main street renovation project. Um, Kevin's worked on an RFP to put out for that. Um, so uh kind of a lot going on still in a, in really a planning stage. Uh, with some, some expenses going out that are primarily related to SAGRAN and then the banners. Uh, we are taking a good close look at the spending plan just because we didn't have a heavy expense here. Um, which is a good thing. Um, if you don't recall from Kevin's report at our last meeting, redevelopment picked up the gap in funding on the water plant project um and is considering potential, potentially funding utility projects in the future um and potentially other town expenses. Kevin is giving the redevelopment commission some input on a lot of the stuff we discussed here in the council. So we'll take a look at what that might look like for redevelopment to contribute to. Other than that, unless I missed anything. Oh, the post health feasibility study, but you probably have that on your. That, that moved on to the second phase, uh, the gala view. So redevelopment commission funded, having the feasibility study done. I think you guys heard about it in our last meeting. She has done her visit and her tour of town. All signs are leading to excitement from her that this would be a great place for a smaller uh like fifty unit to sixty unit hotel um location not to be determined at this time, obviously, but this is just to see if it would be feasible. Uh, and it's moved into phase two, which means they believe there's something here and you only pay for phase two if they think you get through the phase one stage of it. So we got through that stage and it's on.
They presented the investors' numbers. Um, so that's, that's provided by Jessica. And a particular um company in Cobblestone, uh, Sart, initially was brought to us uh by a great deal of friends. And he's with Cobblestone Hotels. They specialize in Midwestern market. Uh, forty to fifty five, sixty five unit hotels. They're very sensitive to small towns because that's where they, they live in terms of the market. They're looking for those hotel pens, if you want to call them that and fill in. Uh, so it's right sized, uh, just getting it, the conversation going and thinking about spots and whatnot down the line here, but we're still in the infancy that the numbers really seem to be friendly to investors. Let's see.
Have you heard the negative expression?
I think that there's a, I wouldn't call it negative. I, I, I don't want to label it that way. Um, I would think there are some sensitivities that need to be considered as we move this hotel in. And it is, it isn't, I always go back to the illusion, the small town is not necessarily limited numbers that live here or the houses. It's, it's a culture. And I think that there has to be a sensitivity to that small town culture when you bring in a new item. And a hotel would be definitely a bigger item. Um, so trying to balance that and harmonize that is something that we have to consider. And the need for development, the need for that market versus changing culture. So I think if I had to generalize, that's where the sensitivities are. Certainly not me, just being very mindful of what we have.
Kevin, when I was a kid at the academy, they had the, the inn still on campus.
Yes.
Um, I don't remember how many rooms it was. I'd be curious if we could get that number.
Yeah, we've had conversations with Andy Selmar over at the academy. Um, and they're a primary driver for need, uh, but not exclusive. Obviously, we have a summer market that's intended of the academy. Um, a lot of conversations to have still, a lot of conversations. Anyone here, the true commission? No, sir. Good update?
Town manager report.
Here we go. Good evening. Uh, several approvals that put in front of the council this evening. Uh, the first one is um an estimate from Hunter Transit LLC. Uh, it is for a project that would allow us to install storm drainage at Bottom Bono Street. Uh, Mr. Chestnut has brought it to the council prior to. We've had an issue ongoing of, of water settle in there with no visible or no possible means when we, before the Dunes infrastructure came in. We now have storm lines that we're able to tap into and capture that bottom Bono and transfer it over. Um, Hunter has provided this quote at thirteen thousand two hundred ninety for that project. It would definitely service that area and help with some of the, the issues that water that the public had brought to us. So I'm asking the council for this consideration tonight for the approval of thirteen thousand two hundred ninety, Hunter Transit for that project. Costs slightly more than it will cost to rewire the lights on fire. By two hundred dollars more is all it costs. Well, we're getting directional drilling, install six inch drain to the Dunes project. You're getting your dips, you're getting your twelve gauge tracer wire, so. Okay, they also rewired.
Prove the appropriation. Second by Mr. Mayor. All those, every second by by saying aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, council. And I think the South Side of Town also thanks you. Ramco uh has provided us with a quote. Um, initially, we received a quote as we were doing the, the uh, the water project at the water plant uh for well sea housing for the shed that needs to, is required to go over that. Um, that quote was pretty high, eighty thousand dollars. Um, so uh Bob Porter came up with the idea, hey, how about we ask our local building trades class, uh freshman, sophomore, Cal Elliott, to maybe have a project to build that shed for us. They were, they were willing to do it. So that's exciting because we're serving two, two needs here. Um, lower price and getting the community school involved. Um, yes, and I also, thank you, Karen. I do have a conflict of interest uh with this, so I'm reading it. Um, the name and address, the public servant is Karen Heim at two seventeen South Ohio Culver, Indiana, four six five one one. Her position is the clerk treasurer and obviously working for Culver at the county marshal. Um, as an annual disclosure statement as to my financial interests connected with the contracts or purchases of governmental entity which I serve, which are made as ongoing basis, particular contracts and vendors, uh Ramco supply. Um, the conflict is.
Yeah, my husband works for me.
There you go.
And he's in sales, so I just, I want to have it out in the open that, that there is that conflict, um, but there's no benefit.
Andy's awesome. He's awesome. Um, but so submitted. And I definitely.
I would ask you to.
Approve that conflict.
I'll make a motion to approve the conflict of interest presented.
Good move by Mr. Rod to approve the council's adventures report from this time.
A second.
Second by Mr. Troy. All those in favor, send me by by saying aye, aye.
Yeah, my card headed over there. Now I can rule. And everything I've said is true. Um, and the best price is uh, the Culver Community School is going to get valuable experience. Uh, so the quote, the confirmation of the quote is twelve thousand five hundred eighty-one and seventy-eight cents. Um, now, what you're getting for that is the material. We still have a cost of cement to put down. We're going to do that ourselves. The school won't do that, that. But even with that fact, I'm pretty sure we'll stay under twenty thousand. I think Bob mentioned that today during lunch. I talked to him. Um, and then you'll have a twenty percent markup of the twelve thousand five hundred seventy-eight that goes to school for the labor. So needless to say, um, I'd like to thank Mr. Porter for finding a good solution towards it because it is, and it's, it's also serving the community at the same time. So two birds, one stone. Ask for the approval of twelve thousand five hundred eighty-one, seventy-eight.
Good move by Mr. Rod to approve the amount.
Yeah, that is literally last by Mr. Mayor. I was in favor, second by by saying aye, aye. Thank you, council. Thank you, Karen.
Karen, I'm not voting against.
It absolutely would be a great, good news story about this in the paper.
Absolutely.
Highlight all the.
What the record show that Mr. Troy stands.
Thank you. Being at Culver Community Schools is my employer. Uh, last order of business before I give you updates. Um, town of Culver special permit, September thirteenth. Uh, start time, four o'clock to eight o'clock. The event is the fortieth anniversary block party. Um, Cafe Max, uh, hard to believe, forty years. Um, uh, one thirteen Main Street Culver and it's Suzie that is putting it on and is our individual sponsoring it. Forty year celebration, community invited to our block party for music, food, beverage, shops are open. Uh, they will be closing that street on Osborne Block on both ends. Um, yeah, between Jefferson and Madison, obviously, I've got the official there. Uh, thank you. September thirteenth, four to eight. Um, alcohol will be served. Chad uh Becker has looked at our permit, our new chief, and, and, and then worked with Suzie on that. And I know he signed it and she, she's taking care of that. Um, she has Republic Waste or Apex, one of the two, for the, for the waste. Um, they will be uh sound, obviously a van, um, no stage, so it'll be low profile. Um, Jesse Campbell, the country band, bringing their own. That's good stuff right there. Uh, apart from that, I think she's worked with Chad quite a bit, had several conversations. I've talked to Bob about the street closure and the logistics of that. I think everything's in place. I have all the signatures. Um, pending chat uh for the police chief signature and that will be working. The approval of the council, also. Okay, I asked for that approval.
Mr. Rod is to approve the application for Suzie for the fortieth anniversary. Is there a second? I think you said, but Mr. Mayor, all those in favor, second by by saying aye, aye.
Well, we did nice. I'll be quick with the updates. We are starting the painting process uh on the curbs. Been uh, Bob will be getting that across this month. There's a little bit of delay. But we are, I will be visiting the ordinances before the painting. Obviously, I want to try to get, uh, there's several needs for disability parking as well as um new no parking as we've changed some of the traffic patterns, added different, uh, say, for example, four fifteens, different things. There's been presented some opportunity in changing of the traffic parking, so we're trying to consider those. I should have that to town by next month's meeting and that way we, there are some repainting that can be done in the meantime. So Bob tells me that we'll be starting on that. The, the trees should be starting after Labor Day. We will be trying to finally doing our tree chop down um of the, of dead trees. Mind you, it's not going to be a, how would we call that, a massacre of next go down. But we will be removing trees and the branches that we've arranged with homeowners. But we will be removing trees and the branches that we've arranged with homeowners. Um, gotten those tree parkways, obviously, not on personal property. Uh, I am in conversation and getting ahold of several individuals to come visit Culver. Uh, a while back, about three or four months ago, I went to an ADA conference down in Lafayette, Indiana. Um, learned some, I think in, during that conversation at the conference, I've learned that we do have some opportunity to maybe to, to do some improvements, especially in the area of the park. Um, what those are, aren't necessarily, and I know that they were brought to the redevelopment prior to. It's something that we are definitely committed, looking at and, and I think there are some opportunities that, and I'd like to be able to present to the council coming up. I would appreciate their opinions, um, and informed opinion uh, prior to that meeting and I'll let you, let you know how I proceed with that. That's where we're at, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
This time your report.
I've got four claims over twenty-five hundred for your approval, the first one is travelers. That's three thousand seventy-seven for workman's comp plate uh, insurance for the fire department. The second is for million systems, that's four thousand three ninety, that's for the part time camera upgrade that you actually approved that, but this is just the expense. Um, core in main twenty-five thousand four six seventy-five, that is for meters, software. Um, and that's from the Geo bond proceeds. And finally Lockmueller, forty-two thousand five twenty-eight ninety-one, that is for construction inspection on the Slate Street sidewalks and the new trail. Motion to approve your claims.
Mr. Rowan moves to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars. Mr. Mayor seconds, all those in favor, seeing if I'm by saying aye.
Aye.
This is the thing I have, um, the owners of fifteen Fleet Parkway are requesting a sewer forgiveness. Um, they have a timer on their sprinkler and it broke while they were out of town. So the water ran, um, Bob did confirm that the water did not enter the sewer system and soaked into the ground. The refund would be three hundred and thirty-two cents.
Second.
All those favors, seeing if I'm by saying aye.
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 Um, then I, every year we have to do, okay, so that's reporting on Gateway, that's that annual financial report. That is beyond my scope of experience, nor do I have the time to deal with it. Um, so I contracted with Peterson Consulting Services. Um, annually, their contract is for two thousand one twenty-five, he just sent me the agreement, I would just ask for most to approve the contract um, with Peterson Consulting for two thousand one twenty-five.
Move.
All seconds. Say about Mr. Troy, all those favors, seeing if I'm by saying aye.
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 And then the final thing I have is, um, I would just ask you to approve a bond, a surety bond for Christine Rainberg, she's our assistant deputy. Um, the amount is thirty thousand dollars and I just need your.
Make a motion to approve the surety bond.
Mr. Rowan moves to approve the surety bond.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mayor, all those favors, seeing if I'm by saying aye.
And that's all, thank you.
That's your.
That's it.
Council.
I want to thank Mr. Troy for already starting the meetings for the Lake Festival. Intentionality and planning is very important, so I appreciate that, full second. Or uh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, we just, we just approved the, our theme this year. And we've chosen this year to honor our first responders of Culver Fire, Culver EMS. That in conjunction with the fireworks fest now being held on Lake Fest weekend should um, be, yep, should be a good additional, so that's a good move.
Good move.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowan.
I don't think.
I have that one. Nothing.
Always on your turn.
There. All second.